Anyways, welcome everybody to the Wednesday, November the 25th. The Cow Meeting District Seashell. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of conflict? I don't know, I can't see everybody. Anyway, I think we're okay. Uh anyways, we'll have the adoption of the agenda. The second, I can't, I can't, I can't see everybody. I don't know. Oh, there's a seconder. Okay, good to go. Uh, I don't think there's any appointments and delegations for today. Oh, anyways, all in favor? There you go. Uh, any appointments and delegations for today? No. Okay. Uh, and then is there any new business? No, no new business. Okay. So we get the third quarter department progress reports. First on our list is Andrew Yates, Chief Administrative Officer.
We don't normally do a presentation on the individual reports, but we have all of the staff assembled. If council has any questions on any one of them.
There any? Any questions for? For the CEO with regards to his, his report?
Sorry, while you're getting to the next thing, Jennifer, could you please send Staff Sergeant Poppy Hallam the link to the meeting?
I'll do that right now.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no questions from there, I'll board a report from.
I'll jump in with a question.
Okay.
Uh, moving to page 11. The DC fast charger equipment lease termination bill of sale. Um, so I guess that's the corporate officer or maybe anyone else who's able to answer it. Uh, so just for clarification, that is the fast charger in between Town Hall and Clayton's that we have sold off to BC Hydro. Is that correct? So it's no longer our responsibility.
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, looks good. Okay, we can move on to a report from Dave Douglas, Director of Financial Services.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Lamb. You know, a lot of what we've been doing and has been working within the restrictions of the COVID. Uh, you know, the restrictions of staff in the office and the way we operate. So, you know, we are really learning how to use our technology here with regards to dealing with staff and workloads and you know, being able to respond, you know, to either queries or, you know, inter-staff queries. So you know, that, that has been one of the bigger focuses from the department. Um, I think I mentioned earlier that, you know, we are like 95% you know, paperless. So it's really pushed our department in that direction where we're approving and doing things all electronically. And once again, our on-base filing has been, you know, we're, we're so close. And um, so these are all really good and important things to be able to work from home. And um, and uh, you know, having the data available to, to each staff. Uh, but other than that, you know, we've had reports that go to council and we've had, we've been working on budgeting and the process for that. How, and we've been planning for our audit, which our interim audit, which happened Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this week. So from the IT perspective, we've been focusing a lot on the our security. Uh, there's in the whole municipal world, probably the whole world, there has been an elevated activity with, with regards to hacking and trying to get into people's systems. And we continue to elevate our level of security. We have a multi-level authentication to get into our system now. Uh, it's a two-step certification or authentication. Um, not everybody's on it yet, but a good chunk of the staff are. And so from an IT perspective, you know, that is a huge focus, you know, and we have been spending quite a bit of time on it. Other aspects, what we're doing is with this disaster recovery. And um, and making sure we have the necessary equipment to push out to staff to work from home. And that's my report.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any questions for? Our Dave Douglas or Finance Guru?
I'll, I'll jump in just in case you can't see me there. Um, how are we doing with the property taxes being paid? The first commercial deadline has passed now, so I'm wondering if we've got much in the way outstanding on that front.
I'm going to say very little outstanding. We, it was surprisingly, we did well. I don't have the percentages, but uh, we'll have, I'll make sure we have percentages on the third quarter uh, report. The third quarter financial report.
Good. Any, any other questions? Yes. Mayor Seeger's.
Thank you. On page 17, there's one little line there. It, third bullet from the bottom on page 17. It says implemented new parks asset inventory collector application. I had, I came to Municipal Hall to, for one of the flag raisings and Jamie, our Parks Manager was there and he was, he showed me this. And he said, it's on his phone. He said, there's a, they're, they're taking pictures of the various assets that we have around in the community. And they're pinpointing them on the map. He said, in this case, it was a bench and somebody in the community called him about the bench. They wanted to do another one and they couldn't remember what was on, what the, the plaque was that they put on there. Jamie said it happened to be one of the, the benches that I had in the system already. Said I could pull it right up and read it to him. She said it was, it was really cool how it totally worked into what he's doing. So he's excited about that. So uh, that ties into our asset management piece that we're working on. So thank you for moving that piece forward.
Any, any other questions?
I'll jump in.
Yep.
Uh, so first a couple of comments. Uh, I want to thank our IT staff, one person uh, for some of the security improvements that we've been implementing recently. Um, I think those are drastically needed. So thank you so much for doing those. Um, including the disaster recovery equipment. Um, I think that's going to be hopefully never needed, but when it is, it is. So that's really good work. Um, just want to quickly comment about a priority of the Finance Department on page 15, developing a service level manual. Um, I'd like to see staff continue work on that one. It's pretty near to the top priority for myself. And into an actual question, um, the hours that the front desk is open, it's currently 10 AM to 3 PM. However, our office is open 8:30 to 4:30. So I'm just wondering, what is the operational requirement for the difference there? Um, why can't we be open the full day at the front desk?
Uh, it's probably not that we can't be open. It's just, just squeezing down the hours that we are open to the public, the public coming in. Um, for the longest time, we, it was just taking payments. And we're finding that the, the community, uh, there's been no complaints about the facility being only open 10 to 3. And most people can get here to do their transactions. It's just really reducing the risk of, um, to our staff of customer contact. We also only allow like five-minute meetings uh, when people come in, if they want to see somebody from, from planning or uh, development or building inspector, we try and limit those to five minutes.
Okay, so I, I bring that up because something that Counselor Tom has mentioned, or Counselor Lamb, it, uh, has mentioned in the past was about the impression that Town Hall isn't open. And that's something I've heard as well. Um, there is that impression that we're not quite as available under COVID. So staff may not be hearing complaints because people aren't coming in. And to me, that's a concern. I think people should be able to reach their municipality.
Um, just so you know, sorry, the phones are open from 8:30 till 4:30. We are not engaging in meetings here. Like if a developer wants to come in and meet, it's all by Zoom or by Teams or whatever. So there is a reduced level of uh, in-person activity, but there's, it's, it's fully available to meet with staff in different ways.
Okay, so if somebody wants to call at night and the morning, they'll be able to.
Yes. Oh, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, so they're able to call at 9:00 AM, we'll pick up and they'll be able to get a real person. I think that's the critical part that we need.
Yeah, I mean, we do run out to the bank at, and stuff, so it may go to, um, to a message, but generally, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Douglas?
I, I wonder if I could just add to what David commented on that. I think in some ways, while our hours are reduced, um, Councilor McLean, I think in some ways, we're actually providing better service than we ever have before. Our staff are working from home and they are um, a little obsessive about checking their email. And so when they get a voice message, it comes to them through their email. And whether that's at 6 o'clock at night, they see that they've got a message and they are returning calls from the public um, beyond our usual business hours. Last night I was working at 10:30 and we got a message on Facebook from somebody trying to figure out how to get a garbage tag without coming into Municipal Hall. They don't want to come, not everyone, but this person did not want to come into Municipal Hall, had called earlier and got a message, a voicemail and wasn't sure if anybody got that. So reached us through Facebook and I was able to get her the information she needed so she could get a garbage tag today. So I think there might be a perception that we're not open. Um, but we are trying to, we put quite a number of advertisements out um, and through social media, what our hours are for in-person um, and that we are available 8:30 to 4:30 and our staff are responding even beyond those hours and on multiple platforms.
Okay, thanks for that.
And Councilor McLean, if I can just add from an HR perspective, not to make this answer too robust, but um, we directly asked the Public Health Officer about this and it was to reduce um, contacts. So right before the November 9th PHO, we were looking at increasing those hours and having uh, increased staff levels as well in Municipal Hall. And then, uh, we were under the new, uh, Public Health Order. So we've been asked to reduce contacts and not bring in, um, more people than, uh, we have been previously. So this is, it really is temporary for right now.
Okay. Any, any further comments or questions for the Finance Department? The only, I'm, I'm just going to make one comment and I know last year in our budget, we had, uh, the council turned down the, uh, request for IT upgrades. And uh, you know, I, I, I'm not too sure if it's fortunately or unfortunately for staff that I'm, I'm running a couple of different projects through the district right now. And I know that we're finding, uh, you know, we're finding some things that are lacking and it's, and, and where the IT, uh, the potential that the IP portion would have, would have uh, supported staff better and, and myself as a, as a as, uh, trying to, trying to get permits and stuff like that. Uh, but anyways, it, it, it's working good. I think because we are both sides are learning from from my, my progress. So anyways, uh, if we're happy with finance, then we can move on to, uh, Andrew Allen, the, in Planning Department?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Chair Lam. Can I say, third quarter of this year was, um, was busy year or busy quarter for us and lots of activity, development activity, uh, progress on projects and so forth. But the planning and development is of course, planning, building and bylaw. So our two bylaw officers or two building inspectors, planning technician and myself were based out of the office full-time in the third quarter. The remaining planning staff were into the office one to two days a week on average. Uh, so it's, it continues to be, um, a juggling match to, to meet and to coordinate just internally amongst ourselves. We've had outdoor meetings, um, both with staff and with, with applicants and developers. Uh, most applicants, if not all applicants are adept at, um, discussing on the phone or on, on Zoom and Teams and so forth. So that, that, uh, we've been doing that as seamless as possible. There have been occasions where we're on a webinar as opposed to a meeting on Zoom and it's confusing, but we try our best. Uh, so we, we were able to make great progress on some, some current files in the third quarter, including Trellis, the Silverstone Care Facility, the public hearing and, and the aftermath. Ian's put a lot of time in afterwards, the applicants respecting covenant and landscaping. Um, the Green Court Development Permit is, is on its way and building permit soon. Uh, we've made community services, although it's active still in the fourth quarter, we spent some fair time on that one in the third quarter as well. Uh, the Grand Excelsior, the large development west of Wakefield Road, the 128 hectare site, meeting with, um, the applicants for that, receiving permission to proceed, strategizing on how a small team can handle a large file. Uh, we are also able to, um, to move forward, move on from some older, long lingering files such as the Everbright Ventures dating back to 2017, the Anderson subdivision, 2018, a poly subdivision, even, even older, that's now PLR and development permit are pending on that. Uh, so we're happy to make progress on old and new files. We took the next step on the zoning bylaw engagement. The survey has been out and, um, open in the fourth quarter and it's definitely going to close, but there was a fair lot of work, um, both planning, communications to, to get that ready, much of which was done in the third quarter, prepping for our public involvement plan, advertising and so forth. So, yeah, um, we had one building inspector away for a period of time on family leave, celebrating, um, a new family and so forth. And then another on, uh, vacation afterwards. So we were doing the best we could to, to patch along and there, everybody in our department, I can, it can say is working hard and making progress and pleased to report and, um, numbers and details are contained within the report here. Thank you.
Okay, any, thank you for your report. Um, is there any questions for, uh, Director Al, Director Allen?
Uh, got a couple of questions at the, uh, near the bottom of page 29, uh, looking at the bylaw complaints and ticketing. Uh, big uptick for third quarter. Is that, uh, is that normal compared to previous years? I guess is the first question.
Um, that's a tough question for me, you know, sort of going through just my, the second, third quarter of my tenure here. I would suggest looking at the numbers that I have here. It's a lot of the complaints are about parking and noise and dogs and so forth. So I think it's just a, a function of, um, not necessarily of COVID per se, but just a function of, um, let's just say, third quarters of summertime, perhaps a lot of people outside, walking dogs on or off leash, uh, noise, parties and so forth. So I would suggest it's yes, hi, but, um, there was from my conversations with bylaw officers, nothing that seemed to be extraordinarily unusual.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I assumed, but it's good to hear it. Uh, and then a follow-up question with the tickets that we do issue. Uh, do we find a high level of compliance in, in actually paying those fines? Do we, do we have a lot that end up outstanding or needing to go to collections?
Uh, yes, that, that's a, that's a concern. That's an area that we've identified for improvement, both myself, uh, Director Douglas, bylaw officers have identified that, that could be an area for improvement. The amendments council made recently to the Ben's bylaw will also put us in the right direction to, to deal with that locally. So incremental steps and look forward to, um, further refinements and improvements in 2021 in that regard and less reliance upon collection agencies or unpaid tickets.
Thank you.
Yes. Mayor Seeger's.
See, business licenses, same page. So it talks about 41, 24, 29, 94 total. And yet, I think we have 180 or more business licenses. Are these new business licenses? Or do we know?
Yeah, I mean, they're, pardon me. There's an assumption that business licenses or many of them are renewed in January or December as, as the new cycle comes through. Some businesses, um, have outstanding unpaid licenses. We've been dealing with that in some regards. Other businesses may in fact be new. Um, but we have had new business licenses in the third quarter. So there, I, I suppose I suggest there's a variety of reasons why that may be. And happy to report back with more detail after discussion with byline and corporate services.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions?
I'll, uh, jump in. Uh, going over back to page 20. Um, I appreciate the Director Allen's comments of the pressures between development applications and, uh, long-term planning. Um, so I just want to understand a little bit of the process better. Um, so this is purely just from my understanding. When somebody comes into the District of Seashell, who do they typically talk to first and how does it move through the, uh, Planning Department? Um, and at what stage does the director get involved, for example?
Sure. Great, great question. Thank you. Uh, emails come my way in all form. Um, you know, of course, with, with two decades of public service in the Sunshine Coast, I have a lot of connections with folks, either personal friends who are in, who are doing things in the community, real estate agents that I know quite well, some I know not at all. I receive, uh, many emails directly to me from folks that I do not know. Perhaps they found me on the website. Perhaps somebody has mentioned my name. Uh, we have a procedure, we have the general, uh, planning department email inbox. I'll, I'll send an email if it's a general inquiry and I, I, I am not the immediate individual, I'll send it to that and, uh, let, let planning staff know we received a new application. I know that, um, Ian, for example, deals with a number of, let's, we'll call them clients, right, for lack of a better word, a number of clients that have not come to me that I was unaware of and he's, he's, he's handling on his own accord. Um, some come to the planning technician from the front counter. Um, others know from previous applications, oh, I worked with Sven last time, so I'll give him a call. So there's a whole myriad of, of ways in which they come to us. But, uh, I do find that a lot of people want to hear from the director. And then many of them are, are open the, the door in the email and say, and if you're not the right person, please direct this to, to the appropriate staff. So I do appreciate that so that there's an understanding that I might, um, be a bit of a hub and filter through.
Yeah, so I recognize that relationships are important in this game. Um, but would there be any value in standardizing that process a little bit more? Um, and maybe they start with the planning technician, they go to the player one, uh, they go to the director at some point, like do we need that kind of standardization? I see here, um, there's a suggestion to kind of monitor that time. I'm just thinking about improving the process.
Sure. It looks like Ian has his hand. I'll defer here.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the shift to having the, the general planning email address is to provide um, part of that first portal, like the, obviously a lot of general public inquiries, if they come to the front counter, that's where the planning technician is sort of the first in line to deal with, with a lot of the public inquiries, whether it's in person. Or via email, but what we found too is trying to streamline, um, in terms of the range of inquiries that come in and, and provide a bit of a filter that, you know, very quickly, you could get a lot of inquiries coming in. It would overwhelm, you know, one person. So there's a bit of a prioritization where if it, if it's something more zoning, um, related, specifically if it's like application related, somebody's looking at potentially changing their zoning or OCP um, or, or more specific development application, then you know, there's an ability and there's some process in place to kind of shift that, uh, towards the planners. So Marina Sven or even myself, um, as needs be. Um, and, you know, the planning tech would then kind of handle a lot of the more basic inquiries um, or, or development permit applications, um, in terms of subdivision stuff, we get a lot of inquiries about subdivision. Um, and tried to kind of provide sort of myself and Sven, um, as sort of the, the first point of contact for that, uh, for inquiries that are coming in. Um, so we've kind of done some measures and certainly updated them over time. Even, even recently kind of revised things as some, you know, it kind of comes in phases, right? You may get a lot of inquiries um, at certain times for various reasons and it kind of overwhelms, you know, the, the, the one person to deal with them primarily. And so we try to filter off, you know, through the team, but also provide some guidance to people on, you know, who would be taking what, um, to provide certainly some a first pass of, okay, this type of inquiry can be directed here, this type of inquiry can be directed here. And so then, you know, people interested in applications potentially are, are usually then more coming to a planner or myself specifically in the first instance. Um, and then if, if it goes something more from there in terms of actually being serious about applying, then you know, you know, we'll, we'll work with them towards that. If, if we need to bring something to the Development Review Committee or to kind of liaise with engineering to see if there's more involved that way. Um, but I mean, yeah, we do have some general procedures in place to try to filter some of that. Because very quickly, I think if we, we, it would be, it might be simple to kind of set it up here, you know, send everything to this person. Um, and then it goes on from there, but you know, that can easily overwhelm someone at one time with the amount of inquiries that we can get. So we try to, to, to prioritize them, to, to send them off to different people, but um, we find, as Andrew has said, people will contact any one of us, um, directly uh, on any number of issues that sometimes is, um, more than anyone can, can handle or that would take time away from Andrew being able to, to focus more strategically on issues where, um, things would be better directed to, um, one of the lower levels.
Thank you. That kind of helps me understand the workflow, um, within the planning department. So thanks for that.
Anyone else have questions for the Planning Department? I can't see anybody. So, uh, anyways, thank you, Director Allen, and and we'll move on to our new, uh, our new, uh, new Director of Engineering, Mr. Kern Dillon.
We can't hear you, or at least I can't hear you. I don't know if the others.
Can't hear you either.
I, I think it's really quiet.
Yeah, Kern, maybe if you just move closer to your mic or, yes, thanks.
Yeah, you can, you can hear me now, right?
It's a little better.
Yeah, so as I was saying, um, I've been getting up to speed on all the stuff that's been happening in the, uh, Engineering Department. I'm, I'm thoroughly impressed with, uh, all the work that's being done. Um, uh, most of the work in the quarterly report was done prior to my joining the District of Seashell. Uh, so I do have, uh, some people participating in the meeting today that can maybe speak to some of these things in more detail than I can, but, um, from what, uh, some of the things that are going on, uh, Parks is extremely busy right now, putting up Christmas decorations and, um, and, uh, getting ready, uh, in the fall season. And Jamie, if you could speak a little bit about that, that'd be great. And uh, getting ready uh, in the fall season and Jamie, if you could speak a little bit about that, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah, we're uh, definitely busy with uh, Christmas decorations. Uh, maybe you've noticed uh, the city hall's getting some. Fancy new lights, uh, no giant Santa on the roof. Um, but yeah, no, uh, we had uh, pole wraps going up this morning. We got lots going on. Uh, wrapping up some capital projects to the Calvary Street Trees. Uh, with the electrical outlets in that first block uh, is almost complete. We're hoping to maybe have the trees in next week. Uh, just waiting for concrete to cure and the actual outlets to be installed. Um. Couple of the other capital things that we got done, we finished the wildlife resistant garbage cans in the third quarter. Uh, we put the new parks overseeder to use, um, which was great. We actually. Were able to oversee the at a time of year when we actually had water, so that was great. So had a really good germination. Um. Eptide Dog Park is still ongoing. Uh, there's been some changes with the sidewalks and some of the engineering aspects. So we're just waiting on some of that and then uh, hopefully we can be opening that in the spring. Um, and Sun Coasters continuing on. Um. I think at the time I submitted the Q three report, we. We had received a conditional approval from B C Hydro uh, to use a section under the power lines in Wilson Creek. And since that time, the privately managed timber lot uh, owned by Mosaic has. Decided they don't want us to use their private property. So that was a bit disappointing to say the least, but um. There is an alternate route up above that section. It's not quite as scenic, but um. We will carry on. It's crown land, so we'll be meeting with uh, S C R D and the. The Recreation Officer from uh, the uh, I guess the province to determine. If we can get a section fifty seven right away through some of those crown land portions, so. It's not dead by any stretch, but um, yeah, lots going on here. And then, you know, just all the regular stuff, so fall cleanups and. Bulbs and fall annuals and stuff, winter annuals being planted. So um, yeah, we're we're busy. And then, of course, you know, the uh. The whole asset inventory piece, which is kind of continually going on in the background. Um. It's not something we have staff to dedicate to, you know, all the time, but as we go out and install a bench, we. Include that information anytime someone has free time. Um, and they don't have something to do, they can run out with uh, with the device and. Add some more benches, trees, whatnot to our inventory. So it's it's really exciting. Um, like Ma- Mayor Seeger was saying, it's uh. It's something that I think the public in time will will really kind of appreciate and it's gonna definitely help us determine some. Service levels um, because of, you know, the fact we know what we have to look after. Um. So that's uh, that's about it from from Parks at this point.
Thanks, Jamie. Uh, so and the other exciting thing I got to do is I learned the whole organization and my department. Is I've been out to, I've been out from behind this desk quite a few times and I went to. Our Water Resource Center and um, that's a really uh, high flying asset that the um, city should, the district should be very proud of. And it's uh, one that I hope that we invest money in and and keep up to snuff. And one of the things that Christine was doing. Um, as a supervisor there and coordinating with her amazing team is um, they have these uh. Very large tanks called the Fed Batch Reactors. And what ends up happening is they fill up with grit over time and. And the grit was actually accumulating above um, these diffusers, which are basically designed to um. Pump oxygen into the waste streams so that the bugs can do their thing to break down the waste. And so. Uh, I went there on site last week to uh, witness an operation where um, some of the operators and the crew were actually down in the tank. Um, wearing full Tyvek suits, doing very time consuming work that was quite difficult uh. Uh, in removing these diffusers and changing them out and and uh, things were all being done seamlessly. So. Um, these are kind of the things that people see uh, behind the scenes that they don't necessarily appreciate the. The general public, you know, once they flush their toilet, they forget about it, but uh, I I can, I was really in awe at the work that was being done and. I'll let Christine speak about some of the other things that are happening on the wastewater side. If uh, if you could just give like a two minute overview, Christine, that'd be great.
Yes, Kern, thank you. Uh, as you were just saying about the Fed Batch Reactors, a lot of. Planning and effort went into setting that up and that's that happened over the course of Q three. And we've had a lot of safety, uh, safety, things that we've been, we've been, we've. We've set up a spill response supply in our inflight wet well building just to have on hand. If there was an emergency that's come up. Uh, we've been doing a lot of uh, hazard identification at the dusty road site and on specific jobs that we have planned for the future. At the W R C and collections. We've been working on some analysis bypassing the filters just to eliminate the. Uh, return backwash and those effects that we have on secondary treatment. And we've been putting a lot of effort into that project. And just our regular maintenance, there's just a lot to keep things going and we're. Uh, we've done a lot of work on our Northwest Bay Lift Station to change that, to make the. Kiosk and the operations more reliable at that lift station. And it's just actually winding up. This week, we've had, uh, we've been working with Olson Electric and getting uh, kiosks set up. And our last step is to put the new pumps in there. Lots of semi semi annual and annual inspections and maintenance on the wet wells. We've been doing a lot of work on the greenhouse and preparation for planting new plants in the spring. And we've had quite a few uh, responses that we've had, uh. We've had some call outs or been twenty three in the in Q three, which is. Really great considering where we've come for for the last couple of years. And one of the exciting thing that's happening this quarter is that we're we're gonna be having, we're hosting a. Level two operators course for a few of the operators on the coast and um, we're really excited about that. That's it.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Christine. Yeah, no, excellent work there. And uh, then fine, today I had the uh, pleasure of uh, driving out. Uh, to get familiar with some of the other neighborhoods in uh, Seashell. So I went up to Sandy Hook and Tuanic. And also view the operations yard and um, the drive out to Tuanic was quite uh, illuminating to say the least. There's some certainly some infrastructure challenges in that area and uh, John was there with me the whole time to uh, fill me in on. On some of the challenges he has there and uh, we brainstormed about various ideas we can do to make things better along Seashell Inlet Road and um. I know his crew worked diligently and and very hard every day, so uh, my hats off to what he's been able to do, given. The challenges and uh, John, if you got a couple of minutes and you wanted to speak about um, some of the content of the last quarter um. Report, which I obviously wasn't here for, but uh, maybe you could speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, Kern. Appreciate it. Uh, it was nice being with you today and uh, as you're open your eyes a bit and uh. You've seen what uh, Sandy Hook would look like. You need a. Yeah, it'd be a good ski jump area for driveways and stuff. Uh, uh, third quarter was, you know, really good. I got a great bunch of guys. We 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 moved the. Trail Bay Pier towards bed for the winter. Uh, we hopefully this week will be the end of flailing for the big mower. Put that away for the winter. Uh, the guys, uh, I I've set up uh, about six weeks ago, eight weeks ago. I did set up a meeting with B A Blacktop about construction and reconfiguring the top part of Snodgrass. Which we had problems from the water and overflow due to the development that was proposed there and they totally. Stripped the land of everything and the water just keeps coming down and causing damage to Snodgrass. They were supposed to get that done the second week of November, hasn't happened yet. I think it's due weather and plus they were up in Powell River doing a lot of work. I have them scheduled to do some work on Selma Park. I have them scheduled in uh, Sandy Hook where we dug out. Us, it's tree tree stump in the road causes a little bit of a sinkhole. Uh, so if that comes across the mayor or councillor's desk. About those areas, you can say, hey, we're just waiting the contractor. I've signed off on it, on the quotes and stuff. Uh, plus Kern, kind of today was kind of funny when we went by Wharf where the sewer repair was done and. I I noticed Kern was getting calls and stuff about the 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 pothole on Wharf Road and it was like, you know, children are gonna fall in there and. And disappear and and then when we went by Kern, it was quite funny with Kern, he said, uh, just his expression, that's it. And then he said, they should go to White Horse or or to Yukon. So it was good. It was great with Kern today, having a new director. I think we're all gonna do great. Uh. And you know what? It's only gonna get better. So that's it from me. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, John. Um, and I'll I'll field all the questions at the end, um, if there are some. Uh, and finally, Sanath is not uh, here today. He had a prior commitment, unfortunately, but I I've been attending the trail um. Avenue project meetings. And so Trail Avenue is moving along. Uh, while a lot of the curb and gutter is completed. Um, the project uh, looks pretty great. Uh, we're ready to pave Trail Avenue. We're just waiting for a break in the weather. Um, so you know, we need a couple decently dry days to go out and do the paving. For Trail Avenue and then once that paving is done, then uh, we should be able to repair some of the other. Uh, potholes like the one on uh, Wharf Avenue, uh, when we do the paving at the same time as we do the paving. So. That's going along and then uh, in addition, uh, there were some inquiries on increased illumination around certain key intersections. In the downtown core and I responded to those that uh, we're already ahead of schedule. We're already on top of that um, before it was actually identified that. Where uh, we put in the order for uh, higher wattage bulbs to uh, illuminate those key intersections better, so. Next time I I shouldn't have to bring my managers, but uh, because most of this work happened before I came here, I I felt uh. They could support their uh, newbie manager, uh, director today. So that is my report and uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Oh, uh, Chair Lamb, you're you're muted.
There you go. So any any questions for our Director of Engineering?
Yeah, I'll go. Uh, this one's for uh, John or Kern. Um. There's a comment about uh, assessing old metal cupboards. Um, I I think we have a lot of challenges with drainage in Seashell, so I'm looking forward to seeing what the results of that. Now, is that culverts on the street side or are we also looking at private side uh, culverts of driveways that are coming onto the road?
Yeah, I'm gonna take this one. Um, so. You know, the the culverts that we maintain are um, the ones that are District of Seashell property. Uh, we we generally, and I think there's uh, we're gonna maybe look at a a policy for this, but. Um, private driveway culverts, we're not maintaining those right now. So those are the ones that individuals have that go into their driveways. Um, and that's just the resource allocation um, issue there. Um, there's only so much we can maintain with the um, person power we have. Um, in the future, so we have to prioritize and um, in the future and I've had some uh, pretty. In-depth conversations with a lot of people in this organization about where we need to go with asset management. And and part of the thing with drainage that we need to do is we need to actually um, define all our water courses that are. Uh, in the district and um, how we're going to prioritize maintenance of those water courses. So uh, when we talk about culverts, they're mainly the ones um, throughout the district. And I think um, uh, a part, correct me if I'm wrong, John, you could jump in at the end, but. Uh, the comment about um, steel culverts versus other types of culverts, we noticed that a lot of the. Corrugated steel pipe culverts are eroding uh, within the the community, because you know, they corrode after time and um. Uh, so we've been using a lot more um, plastic H D P E uh, culverts. And there are culverts now that are treated with zinc as well, like uh, corrugated steel pipe culverts treated with zinc or are um. Coded with a polymer that are a little bit more resistant to corrosion. So that's, there's a lot of uh, asset uh. Um, condition assessment that has to be done before we get there and and it's gonna be a long journey.
Any 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 other questions for our Director of Engineering?
I was just gonna say quickly, uh, keep up the good work on the drainage. Um, it's critically important, so. Enjoy the adventure.
Yeah, thank thanks a lot and I I uh, by extension, that compliment goes to John and his crew, so um, my hat's off to them.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Chair. Um, another follow up question on the drainage, which uh, perhaps um. John Devison would be better suited to answer, but uh, last winter or the last couple winters, we've had a a problem with. Uh, particular area on Sandy Hook Road uh, with flooding. And I'm just wondering if we've got uh, something. Fixed or patched for this winter.
Yeah, councillor, yes, we did. Uh, it was a bit of a nightmare for myself. Uh, when I did a bunch, I actually showed Kern that today, a bunch of investigating. I found that my predecessors had let somebody put a catch basin in the bottom of the driveway, which is successful. And then hook into a ten inch pipe and they put the ten inch pipe where a lot of people in Sandy Hook like to fill in the ditches and park their cars. And uh, but they didn't continue with the pipe to the next pipe which. Connected to our system, overflow, they just ended the pipe. So the pipe will fill up and we have that massive flooding area on Sandy Hook Road. Uh, that that has been all rectified. The lady that had affected the most was quite thankful about that. I opened it all up. And I left an open ditch there because people, it it, they wanna park their cars and then we, it it snowballs like I was telling Kern in the wintertime. When if you live in Sandy Hook, like I said, the driveways before, when they say it's gonna snow. Where do they put all their cars on the road? And then the complaints come, I my road's not getting plowed because now I can't get my plows down the road. But that was rectified and uh, yeah, it took a bit of a bit of brain work to figure it out, but we we got it done.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Uh, okay, I don't see any further questions, so.
I got more questions. I was just giving other people a chance to ask if they had any. With regards to, sorry, I'm just looking on page thirty two. Uh, it's in the sewer operations. There's the annual jetting of the lines along Eptide Street uh, to remove grease buildup. And I was just wondering if this is uh, primarily due to restaurants? Like, are they not maintaining their grease traps sufficiently? Or is this just regular maintenance on a sewer system that even grease traps can't catch everything? Well, I'll I'll take a stab at this one and Christine, if you wanna wanna jump in at the end, if I've missed some content, um, I'll I'll let you do that, but. Um, the my guess is like this is typically done as regular maintenance, it's required. Now, um. Whether a lot or if there's a grease trap issue um, in district, in the district, usually um, grease tracks are not something that. Municipalities like are actively looking for and actively inspecting for that. That's something that um, the food inspector, when they go into the restaurants. Um, should be um, checking to make sure those grease traps are there. And I. I know from my experience in the past municipality I worked in, trying to coordinate with the um, health authority on trying to get the information on whether these businesses. Have grease traps or not functioning grease traps. That's a different, difficult exchange of information. So um, that that might be uh, one part of the reason why uh, we're getting grease accumulations, but. Um, as part of um, developing this asset management framework that you're gonna hear me uh, uh, talk about it a lot and uh. And it might be uh, a drinking game at home, uh, if they're watching these council meetings. Um. It it's part of the of figuring out what the issues are with the current system and how we uh, deal with those. So um. Christine, do you have anything to add on this uh, the grease issue?
Yes, thank you, Director Kern, and uh, thank you, Councillor Todd. Uh, there's several areas throughout the District of Seashell that we know we generally have. Issues with um, solids buildup or grease buildup and along Eptide due to the. Issues with um solids buildup or grease buildup and along Eptide due to the configuration of our. Sewer mains in that area, we know that we have grease that builds up in that section. So that kind of. Um, just before it comes into the WRC, there's a a series of manholes where. The elevation changes a little bit, and so it allows water to sit in the line and then the grease floats in it and it um causes some blockages. So. That's just what we know there with that particular line on Eptide.
Okay, thank you. And a a quick other sewer question, since I've got you and it's on the same page. Uh, the the cleaning of FBR two, it looks at it, uh, eight days uh and twelve vacuum trucks. Uh, is that? I guess the question I'm coming fro- for on this is how often is that needing to be done? Was that just the one FBR? Are they going to be done on a rotational basis or as needed?
Um, so I'll 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 take stab at that. And I, my understanding is that was the first time that this FBR was actually um maintained in this manner. Um, and um, we came to the decision to do this maintenance uh due to issues we're seeing in terms of performance with the system and. And that's part of the great monitoring work that Christine's doing with her team there. Um. Now, where would where would we like to go with this? It's um, you know, again, uh, asset management, asset management all the time. Is uh, we want to work to a place where um we have this scheduled uh maintenance. And with our City Works uh program that handles our workflows, we're able to uh schedule a lot of our maintenance activities in there. So. Um, yeah, we've done it this time, but whether that's the right frequency. Or um, when when we need to do it again, it it A, it depends on the waste stream that comes in. And uh, B, it it um, it depends on um. Well, it depends on a lot of factors too, like we, i- it's all interrelated. You know, we have um. A lot of uh, what we call uh infiltration and inflows from stormwater that goes into our sanitary pipes. And so that also can foul up our our um fed batch reactors a little bit. Uh, quicker if there's a lot of grit and sand getting into the system. So um. You know, right now, we we don't have a handle, but we're hoping to get a better handle on on what we uh need to do in the future. But. Um, based on what Christine has told me, this was the first time since that uh. Um, facility has been in operation that we've done a a full uh changeout of diffusers. And anything to add on that, Christine?
No, that's great. We're just that we're, we are planning on doing uh next FBR number one and then FBR number four.
And uh, and uh, just uh, uh, for your information, Counselor Todd, if you'd like to uh. See, I believe, did we make a, we made a video of that operation, did we not, Christine? We uh had one of our technologists maybe. Uh, take some photos. So um, if you're, if you're curious and seeing uh what's involved, I think you'll have a whole new appreciation for the. The type and the level of work that's being done at the the Water Resource Center.
Yeah, if there's an opportunity to see that, it would be greatly appreciated knowing how you guys are 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 doing what you're doing. So. Thank you for that. And uh, thank you, Mr. Dillon. You're learning very fast here.
Mister Chair, Chair Lam, if I may just suggest on that note, so so that we don't forget about it, could maybe we could make a note to share the video with council? Or perhaps even be able to put it on our document library on our webpage. Staff will note to look into how best to distribute that to all of council.
Sure. Great.
Need a motion to that effect then, Joanne? No? Good, good.
Yeah, no, we don't. We've noted it. Our recurring secretary has noted it.
So, so can I make a motion to receive all these reports?
Sure. Yeah, anybody to check?
Yeah, it's been seconded.
Okay, there you go. All in favor? All in favor, there you go. Okay, so we're finished with that part of it then. Uh. We're gonna move on to five point two. Uh, twenty twenty-one budget, one-time and ongoing costs report from David Douglas, Director of Financial Services.
Thank you, Chair Lam. Um. So we um, we have been doing uh quite a bit of work within the budget and uh one of the items that. Uh, we plan to bring through first to council is what we're calling um either one-time items or new ongoing items. Uh, for councils to review. Um, part of the recommendation here is that uh, if possible, uh, if you could give council some or staff some direction as to which ones. We would like to see, keep going through the budget process. Um, I think there's a number of them that are listed there that uh will need further discussion before. We either, you know, move them into the budget. Um, we are planning um. A session down the road um to have a couple of days where we can talk about these items str- little more strategically, you know, give a. A bigger picture uh overview and that will help um decide whether we want to uh, that council would like to move forward on some of these um. Items. So this is basically um the list that staff have uh put forward to me. Um, from their departments is uh with regards to adding. Either new new staff or adding a uh a uh operational matter to their budgets. And um. In behind the sheets, we've got the request forms that described the uh, the project or the one-time or ongoing cost. And um. So if you want me to go through one at a time, we can, or um. Do you want to um, you know, talk about the ones that you think we should be adding into the budget right away? I'm happy to proceed either way.
Chair Lam, could I suggest that um, we maybe start with page forty-four and just go through them? There's, there's two pieces here that we're probably gonna look at. One is, which ones of these items? Can, are we okay with just including in the budget? Um, you know, there's some of them, I think, if we go through their small dollar values or their items that we want to see moving forward. Probably don't need a lot of discussion. Um, those we could probably just move forward and have them be included in the budget. Some of the others, though, we might want to have more information on, um, more conversation on, have them come back to us again. So I think if we can split them between the two, I think that would get rid of some of the fairly straightforward ones and. Have us actually devote time and staff devote time only to those that require more information. So page forty-four actually has a list.
Okay, so uh, page forty-four, does everybody have it or do, would you like me to share my screen? Probably better for you on your screen if you have had, you have it, it can show it bigger uh on your own screen. Uh, so the top three or four there, there's their carry forward items. So we'll just bypass those for now. Then on the far left, they're numbered oh, one, oh, two, oh, three. So we'll go in those orders there. So oh, one. Is a website overhaul. This was included in last year's budget. Um, and it was uh deferred at that point um for for a number of reasons. And um, but we we as staff feel this is an important one um for uh, especially in this environment of COVID. Um, this is actually one that we're, we would be also, we would be recommending to be funded from the COVID funds that we're getting. So. There is a potential revenue source here or a funding source right from the word go on this one.
Chair Lam, do you want to find out what council's direction is on this one?
Yep. Shouldn't need, any thoughts or concerns with this one?
I wanted to support this. Uh, I I don't think I was in favor of actually deferring it last year, so I think this is something. That we should be um acting on.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
Yeah. I know I've, I've tried to use the website quite a few times and and actually it's one of those things when I think the front page says the District of Seashell has nine thousand people in it. So uh, I think that sort of tells you where, how long ago it was worked on. But I I know for myself, I mean, I'm a, I'm I'm not very friendly with a computer and and I find our website very, very uncomfortable to work with. So uh. Anyway. Any other questions or concerns with that one?
Yeah, just, I'm gonna chime in. Um, I I noticed here that it's being proposed for twenty twenty-three according to the uh. Uh, page forty-six. Um, I think if we've got an opportunity to move it forward, uh, or bring it up, I should say. Uh, with another funding source, then we should definitely look at it. Um, I don't know that I'm in favor of taxing for it at this time in light of COVID, but we do have that. Um, that that money that we've got coming that. We probably should have a bigger discussion on as a whole package on on what we're doing with it or. What have you, but but for now, I'm I'm in favor of that website proceeding next year if we can fund it.
If I could just interject, there's staff are working on lists and projects to come to council for consideration. Um, and on the COVID relief money or COVID um opening plan money. Um, so, yeah, um, then on the page twenty-six, you said. There there would be an area of it's it's a plan for this year. Apologize for that. Okay, any?
Yep, Mary Sigur.
Yeah, our website overall, I mean, one of the, one of the big things that we can't really do with our website is public engagement. There's some amazing software packages out there that if we could incorporate them within our website. Uh, we can keep the community informed as to what we're looking at engagement, you know, engaging with them on. And have the opportunity for them to actually give us their feedback and their input at any particular time. They can see that. There are others that are out there. I think, I don't know, sixty-six dollars or sixty-six thousand dollars, sixty-six dollars be a bonus. Sixty-six thousand dollars is that sufficient? To do what we want. Um, particularly incorporating those other components.
Okay.
Do we know, do they know the answer to that question? Do we know if sixty-six thousand dollars is sufficient funds? To give us the website with the functionality that we need?
Um, I would say probably not. This is the third time this exact same business case has actually, I don't think you even have the business case. But this is his third time and it's come to council and I just keep rolling it over. Um, so this, my original intent was to give us a a. Good, robust platform and then maybe in future years, add a little bit, add a little bit, um, make it a bit better. If we're able to. It would be nice to do it all at once and get those kind of the discussion forums and the interactive pieces. Built right into the website. I don't know how much more that might be. But sometimes it's hard to tell until after you've gone out to RFP. I mean, you talk to other municipalities. I think Vancouver spent a million dollars, which is obscene. Um. But I think we we don't have a huge website. We don't offer recreation. We don't have, there's a lot of things we don't have on our website. So I think we can do um quite a bit within a really reasonable budget. Um, but maybe adding some of those extra pieces um might be a little bit more. I can look into it in more detail. If this is, this is a project that council does want to proceed with, I can look into it in more detail and get a a firmer number.
I think that would be advisable, given the environment we're working in and we don't know how long this is going to last. And. We have a number of projects that need a consultation with the community. We need to be able to have them find information easily and. Interact with us on all of these projects in an easy manner that's um. Say easier for staff to do and easier for the community to do. If we're looking at redoing the website, now would be the time to put those in to make sure that it does what we need it to do. We don't know how long this is going on. We live, we live, we initially thought it was temporary. And operated like that. It isn't. It's here. So how do we deal with it? So I guess I would, I would like to see this one. Um. I think, I think we've got support for moving it forward, but I think we need to have. A little more robust look at what it can provide and what the cost would be so that it can be included.
I could do that.
Right?
Okay. Everybody comfortable with that discussion? Should we move on to uh? Next one?
So O, O two would be um. So you're going to see a number of, um, this is just the first of a number of staff additions. And uh, you know, we, we may need to um. You know, put them all together and talk about the bigger picture here at some point, but um. This is, you know, the request from each department and uh this is how they would would like to see their department move forward. Um, so this one uh being adminis- and min assistant, and that would be for the. Administration Communications Area. Um, and that's just uh. Seventy-two thousand dollars is the salaries and benefits for uh as an additional staff there.
Any comments from uh council?
Go ahead, Councilor McLean. I'll speak second.
Okay, sure. Um, I'm just wondering if we could speak to to a little bit more of the difference between. The administration admin assistant O two and the. Executive assistant for administration O twelve.
Okay, so the O twelve is uh executive assistant that would be in a, an exempt position. And that person would be answering to um our human resources and the CAO. Uh, the other person would be uh the, the admin assistant, which is O two. Would be in the communications and uh would be um reporting to Julie Roberts. Sorry, Julie Rogers, my mistake, sorry. So they'd be doing two different functions. One would be helping, you know, with the communications and um. And uh, that side, and then the other person would would be doing more humor, like human resource work.
Okay, so even though the both administration, they're two fully separate positions.
Yeah, one is a union position, the other one's exempt position.
Any other comments from council?
I'm actually wondering if we can have a look at the staff complement as a separate discussion from the rest of the. Items within this list. Um. I suspect we could spend quite some time talking staff uh without getting to any of the other items on this list.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll comment on that too. I mean, I, I think we, we see the list that staff, that staff are asking for, right? Additional staff in various places. And that is another conversation. And I think we're looking at setting up that conversation to tie it into work plans, et cetera, so that we look at. How does the staff complement support the work plans that we're looking at staff, you know, for to staff to do? So I think, yes, um, you know, general questions about them here, you know, like Council McLean was saying, but. Um, I don't think this is a, the time to actually make decisions on whether or not to include these or not. I think we need more information on those in in light of. What we're asking them to do, what we're asking our staff to do. Does that kind of fit with what you're saying, Counselor Todd?
Well, just having tallied it up before the meeting, it's twelve and a half new FTEs and that's a big increase. Uh, I recognize that. Staff have laid everything out and it's up to us to tell them no, but uh, you know. It it's reasonable to need to us to add some staff to the complement. I just, I want us to have a more. Um, I don't want to use the word fulsome, but a more or. Complete discussion around the staffing as as one entity rather than trying to piecemeal through them on this list and we. You know, decide not to include one, but include the net, you know, I just, I don't want to go down that road right now.
No, and um, you know, staff is aware that's. No, and you know, staff is aware that's likely the path that that we were going to go today on the staff.
Okay. Yeah, yes, Counselor Cooster.
I'm just a quick question, Dave. So all of this, all this, the staff request would be. Obviously through taxation. Are we able to, moving forward, when we're looking at requests, just get a feel for, I think it would be good for us and. The public, just to get an idea of what kind of percent increase that would look at, look like in the big picture. If we're doing it through taxation, if that makes sense. Sorry, I'm muffled, but I'm in a public building and I'm wearing my mask, so.
I definitely, we can provide that, yeah, down the road.
Yeah, thank you.
You're muted, Tom.
Do we need to have a motion then from? To move this, move the staff discussions on staffing to another meeting? Or should we, can we just?
Maybe I can help provide a little bit of clarification so we don't get too far off track here. There, there's no intention today. For us to get into a grand debate about things you don't want to do or or knows at this point or. Wondering about staff numbers or percent increases to the budget overall. The idea is if you can whip through this list, if there are. Things that are obvious that you want to do and you want us to consider including it, we will do that. We will have subsequent meetings later to have the larger debate and the bigger picture. Conversation because when you start looking at, you know, fourteen staff members, that's a much bigger question about what is it that you want to do? What do you want us to accomplish and can we do it with the current complement? A couple of things that came up during the staff reports or the quarterly reports, you know, spoke to that as well. You know, what level of sophistication do you want us to have when it comes to customer service, responding to the public? You know, putting videos together of the treatment plant work that we're doing, these sorts of things, right? So they all sort of fit into that. So the idea here today was just to sort of go through this. If there's something tiny, you know. A five thousand dollar thing here or whatever, that's not going to be a big impact and you want to do it. You know, or something like the website where it's like, yeah, we really want you to look at that, then great if. The rest of the stuff, don't get hung up on it. We'll come back to these things later. Once we we have a chance to have a bigger discussion. Hope that helps a little bit.
Okay. Awesome. Okay. Do we want to, yes, Mary Sigurs?
At number five, Art Wrap. We've already approved that the matching funds for that in prior. Motion. Because we needed to approve that in order to do the application. So if we get the funding, this money's already been approved. So.
So this will go into the.
Yeah, go into the budget.
Yep.
The number six ortho photo imagery acquisition. This is a joint project with the regional district and the town of Gibson's. And I think it's on our budget deliberation at the regional district. If we do this now, our contribution is minimal to upgrade all of our ortho stuff. So I'd be totally in favor of that.
I had a quick question about the ortho imagery, actually, since we're on it. Is there, the the regional district does sort of an annual contribution to a. Reserve fund so that when it comes up, it's just done, it's taken care of, it's operational, it's not really a. It's not really a question of of what taxes you want to raise to to fund it. So. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us to do that. For twenty twenty two and beyond.
And that opportunity exists. It is a low dollar value for us, so. I would. I I would hesitate at the four thousand dollar number, but if it were, you know, greater like fifteen, twenty, there's no question about it. Yeah.
Hey. Any further questions on that? One? Okay, let's move on then.
Councilor McLean had his hand up there.
Okay, good. Counselor McLean?
Yeah, rather than just going through in order, I was gonna cherry pick a couple of the ones that I'd like to see pushed forward. Um.
Yes, please.
So I think another one that makes a lot of sense in my mind, it's a daily washroom cleaning. I think no matter what the next year looks like. For one, one more year, it's a good thing to invest in. So I'm extremely comfortable with pushing that one forward.
And that is another project or item on this list that likely can be funded from the COVID. Startup funds.
I see nods of agreement, so I'll throw out another one. The vulnerability management.
Yes.
Thanks, Brenda. That's another one that we've identified that municipalities are at risk. And we need to be investing more to making sure that our computer infrastructure is safe. So I think that's another one that. It's very high in my books.
The. The notice board outside community, outside the community room there, the. Oh nineteen, as far as I'm aware, it's just like buying a skid of paper or a box of pens. If Joanne wants to replace that bulletin board, she can just go ahead and replace that bulletin board. So I'm happy to see that move forward at this time, too.
Okay, so I have a question about some of the R C M P requests on here. Where would those be funded from?
So those ones, a number of them would be funded from the the reserve we have set up.
Okay.
And. The R C P would be funding part of them themselves, like the. The high potency drug processing unit, it's actually a twenty, I think a twenty three or four thousand dollar item. Our portion is fifty four hundred dollars. The other, there's another one there that is on the other page is also a shared call. Item between us.
So the radar laser traffic units? And the building security camera.
Yeah, the building.
Cameras.
Yeah, the building security cameras is another shared one.
The R C M P new chairs, that's probably ours.
Yeah, that one's ours. So with the, with the reserve fund there, we have to make sure we maintain enough in the reserve for the coverage for. What they're calling their. When they get their increases or their first contract as a R C P or now a union, we have to make sure we maintain enough for that. And the the estimate right now is just, just in and around two hundred thousand dollars, so. That would be the, you know, the only. Restriction is to try and keep it in that range.
And how much would we we'd be adding this year in budget if we kept the taxation the same?
Depends on how, how. How the staffing works out there throughout the years. So the only amounts that actually reach this reserve is when we have. Less staff being funded from the municipal funds. So if we say we fund nine for six months, then there's a savings there. We put that savings into that that reserve. There's no, and there, other than that, there's no intended move of money into that reserve.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to follow up real quick on that reserve, do we know? When do we know what savings from twenty twenty might be going into that reserve?
I won't know till close to September, oh, twenty twenty, I'll know really close, really, really, in the near future. That that will be known real close here now.
So honestly, when I look at all of these requests, except for the staff one, which we have to come back to, sorry, all of the others. I'd be in favor of moving all those forward. I mean, this drug potency one. That's huge. That that's probably the number one thing that I I'd see have to happen, but all the others are. Are for the safety of the R C P and our residents.
I have no issue moving the R C P stuff forward.
So the, from, from. From the mayor's comments, soon we'll, that would hang out would be the staffing one, then.
Oh, twenty seven.
Yeah, oh, two, seven.
I'm comfortable with that as well.
The only one I'm not sure about yet, oh, two, two, the soundproofing of the meeting room. There's no dollar associated with that yet.
Oh, yeah, we, we need to get a price on that or the R C P are working on that now.
Okay, so we expect to hear back on that before we're to to do too, too deep into budget.
Correct. That won't be included until it comes back to the price.
I had a question about some of the Rockwood stuff. So we've applied for a grant, so I'm assuming that the stuff on Rockwood that's on here is not. It's not building. Except things like refinishing the dining room floor, et cetera, with those. Is that not part of the, the work that was that we would do under the refurbishing grant that we applied for?
Don't remember if that one item was included or not, that one was, we were upgrading the washrooms and. Some of the accesses and. So I'm, I'm not positive on that one.
Okay. They're all small dollar amounts.
If I could just jump in on the Rockwood piece in the. Document down below, it does list an elevator for seaside center, but that's not listed in the spreadsheet up top.
No, so what we did when we produced this sheet is that we pulled capital items and so you'll see. Anything that was a capital of nature would go to the capitalist and so the elevator will be on the capitalist. Once again, the elevator is an item that could be funded from the COVID relief fund, so.
So what you're saying is this is all operational?
These ones here are operational and that. That list that's included as backup includes both capital and operations. And so we just split them from an accounting perspective.
So the only ones on this list that are ongoing were the staffing. Everything else is one time?
Well, the. The I T one that you guys liked is twelve grand for five years.
Right.
So that one would be ongoing and there is, I think there's a couple of other ones that would be ongoing.
Oh, twenty nine, our capital contribution increases ongoing.
That's ongoing as well, yes.
Wait, are there any other ones? So ones we haven't discussed are oh, three, oh, four. Eleven. Fourteen. Twenty one, A, B, C, D, E, which is Mission House, F, G, Seaside. And twenty nine. The rest are staff.
Okay, yeah, is counsel. Counsel pretty comfortable with that moving forward?
Do we, do we need to have a vote on it or? Or?
Do staff want a motion for us to incorporate the things that we've sort of agreed to go forward at this point, just for formality?
I think we've recorded the the comments to the ones that you want. I think that that should be good enough to move forward into the budget. For, for our purposes to bring, to bring back as a part of the budget.
So I have a question. What does that mean? What you just said, what does that mean? Are you going to incorporate them in the budget?
Yes.
And just say that they're, they're in there?
Yes.
And, but the other ones that we haven't identified are still going to come back to us.
Yes.
For further information, okay?
Sorry, I probably wasn't clear.
So Jennifer, does Jennifer have a list of the ones that we want incorporated?
I've been keeping an ongoing track, yes, Mayor.
Thank you. So just, does staff want a motion to that effect? No, okay.
Okay, so now we need to go down to page. Seventy two. And this would be the sewer list listing. And. Once again, there's. There might be one or two staff items in here. But the rest are either one timer, new and ongoing. Although some of these are critical and some of them are. So there was, okay, we, we can start at the top or we can. Have Christine go talk a little bit to us about some of them or. So the HVAC maintenance is an annual item. That would need to be into the budget. I think last year we did HVAC maintenance and we. We found out that it need to be done more often, same with the boiler pressure. Vessel and multi-stack servicing, that's an annual ongoing. Remember S four, just a one time, it's a radio communications within the building. Oh, five is ongoing, it's emergency contingency that we feel we need to build into that budget of fifty thousand dollars. So that would be an annual amount that would go in and be used if, if needed. Backup generator fuel. Scrubbing, once again, it's a annual. And that would be ongoing. Grinder rebuild, septage S seven, that would be every other year, so two thousand, one, twenty one, twenty three and twenty five. And so that's just a rebuilding of, we have two motors that we swap in and out, and so it's just rebuilding one in the off year. Structure support for. Capacitor centrifuge. That's one time only cost. Replacement of multitask compressor unit, that's also one time, but it could show up again in five years from now. S ten pH probe replacements. Once again, that's more over multi-years, so it'd be in twenty one. Twenty three and twenty five. Receiving monitor, mon, environmental monitoring. That would be, that's a five, over five years, seventeen thousand dollars per year, so it's ongoing. S twelve curtain replacement and greenhouse. That one has been pushed out to twenty twenty three, but it's ten thousand and twenty twenty three listed here, just so we don't lose, lose. That one has been pushed out to twenty twenty three, but it's ten thousand and twenty twenty three listed here, just so we don't lose lose track of that one. Replace safety harness fall equipment, so that would be one time, but it would probably come back in four or five years as the equipment wears out. New control for crane on truck S truck fifty five, so this is S fourteen. Two thousand dollars be one time. Roof repair at in in. Influent wet well building, eight grand, one time only. Safety support tripod for three locations, six thousand dollars, one time only. Trivinity probe secondary treatment, five thousand dollars. That should be one time only. Carbon replace carbon for odor control S eighteen. Twenty five thousand six hundred and fifty, so that's Canadian there, but it costs nineteen US, that would be required every three years. UV bulb replacement, this would be annual, this is an amount we would put into a reserve or into a. Restricted surplus where we're putting money away for the UV bulb replacements. This one was in last year's budget. But was deferred and so. We have a little schedule there where we go eighteen grand for twenty twenty one, sixteen grand for twenty twenty two and then and twenty twenty three and then twelve and twenty four and twenty five. Service contract. That would be eighteen thousand for five years. Asset management schedule now, this would augment our where we're going with asset management and it would be just for the. The treatment plant or the water resource center wouldn't wouldn't be including any of the pipes in the ground at this point. And that's fifty thousand dollars to. Get us started on asset management scheduling. Then a staff member there. And then servicing of order control system and that's ten thousand. And maybe an annual coming up, we'll find out once we we do this. So those are the items that we have listed there. A lot of them are annual.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Seegers.
So I just did some rough math behind the scenes here while you were rattling stuff off, we have two basic columns, one is. An increase basically the base budget. Because it's stuff that has to happen every year, and if this is stuff that is regular ongoing maintenance, that's the base budget. You presented the information here, I think that's part of the conversation we're going to have. Looking at the whole water resort, water wastewater system. But I think we need to look at what is the increase to base budget to do the ongoing maintenance that has to happen. I added up the some of the numbers in here, some of them were are different because we, you know, deferred some, etc., we're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase to base budget. From with what we know at this point, and then we also on top of that have another. I don't even know how much I've got other numbers other places because some are one year to, I mean, I think what I what I I'd like to see and I throw this out to the rest of the council here, but I'd like to see. If we have these one time things, it's going to happen every five years, we need to put money away now. So we divided up by five years so that we increase our base budget to cover off all of the ongoing regular maintenance to maintain the facility. That's part of the cost. So what kind of numbers do we need to have come to us for that and and looking, it's part of the bigger picture, right? Part of the bigger picture of how do we ensure that staff are doing what they need to do to maintain it and we're providing the funds and the staffing to do it? Because this, I mean, you shouldn't have to come to us every year and ask for ten thousand dollars for this and five thousand dollars for that when it's regular ongoing maintenance.
No, but we need to let you know why there's there's lifts and why, you know, we're not, why is not a zero percent increase or a five percent, you know? And this is what this kind of does is to let you know what we need.
Counselor Cooster?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, same kind of idea that Mayor Seeger said that we anything that has to do with maintenance, it's kind of something you have to do, so it should just be part of our. Our budget and we do need to think about future and putting money aside if it's, you know, going to be five years down the road because in five years. The council, whoever it may be, doesn't want to be stuck with some of the stuff that we had to deal with, right? Like want to have money put aside for stuff that we know we're going to need, so. That's all I want to say.
Any other comments from council?
I just I'll just play pin and say that I wholeheartedly agree, it seems silly to have to come back to us. All the time for things that are maintenance, I mean, I haven't counted, but the list would probably. Look a little bit different if those things weren't on here, so I think, you know, we have to be honest with the community about what it costs. To run such an important asset and we need to allow you guys to be able to budget for that.
Kern had his hand up, maybe we should go to Kern.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, to address. On council's point and specifically worship's point about these ongoing O and M costs, I think part of the issue is is this is a new fairly new facility opened in. Two thousand fifteen, it's state of the art and a lot of these items are coming up for the first time, so um. You know, in the absence of a comprehensive asset management plan, some of this stuff's not in our workflow, you know, people go through experience of things. requiring maintenance for the first time or or they sift through O and M manuals to figure out. When they have to maintain some of these things they are aware of, because you know, through ex exchange of knowledge with. The builder of the facility and our people who work at the plant, they are aware of some things, but the other issue is when you have a turnover of staff. You know, a news like Christine's being there, she she joined us a casual in two thousand seventeen and and became the supervisor, so. She's done a great job in getting up to speed on what the requirements are at that plant and understanding what needs to be changed out, but. Obviously, there's a lag time when you have a changeover in who's supervising the plant and and what's out there, so. I don't know if all the previous knowledge was passed over to Christina, she took over, so. Ideally, what we want to get to is a point is where, again, here's another plug for acid management, is we want to. Go through the whole facility and and figure out what's, if we want to maintain the level of service. And we they will through that estimate will will identify what level of funding we require. To maintain a certain level of service at that plant, and so usually what it identifies is a deficit. So what I think is happening right now is we have a deficit on what we're spending on that plant to maintain a certain level of service. And that's what we're trying to get a handle on, so in terms of these one time requests, though, I think that might be a function of the newness of the plant. Some of the turnover and the staff and just us getting a handle on on the various things that need to be done there, so. And as we, as a plant has a longer. Maturity and some of the staff are in place longer and we get our handle on this, I think what my preference is is to move some of these things into ongoing base own and funding. That is one kind of request.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that, I mean, looking at this list. S one, S two, S six. S ten, eleven. You know, S eighteen, like, these are items that should have been on the two thousand and fifteen budget. They're 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 annual items, they're things that need to be taken care of. You know, if you've got an operating certificate for a facility, something like S one HVAC maintenance is not optional. Like you have to have it maintenance every year and you have to document that, so. The fact that we've managed to get away with it somehow for five years is kind of. Surprising and and, you know, disappointing in a way because. Now it looks like it's going to look like a massive increase to the user fees. When really these are things that should have been started to be paid for and saved for five years ago and we're just weren't thought of, weren't in a position to do so.
Well, what goes hand in hand with the acid management plan in the running of this plant is a an assessment of what our sanitary user rates should be. And you know, we currently have them on the books, but you know, Dave couldn't speak to this more than I can, this like. I'm not sure if the sanitary user rates in place now are reasonable, given that we have this awesome facility and. And part of the thing too is the our our citizens in Seashell are very conscious of the environment. There they embrace sustainability and they want the high standards of treatment out of this facility. So if those are the levels of service that the citizens require, then there should be a little bit of give and take and that they should recognize it. In order to fund that level of service, they need to kick in more money to achieve that that high level of. Treatment that they're looking for, which the treatment standards that we're trying to achieve at the Water Resource Center are above and beyond what you see. At most other plants, you know, Victoria, we all know about what Victoria does in terms of raw sewage in the ocean, so. You know, if the if that's a that's a facility that the first day I stepped into the district, I was. Very pleasantly surprised and and quite frankly impressed at what I saw there and it's something that we need to maintain and put resources into. So. That's my my take on.
As a follow up, I do actually have two questions from this list, the seventeen thousand dollars for S eleven receiving environment monitoring. I understand that's that's physically going out into the bay and sampling the water a couple of times a year. Is that intended to be a contracted out service or is that something that we're able to do in house utilizing the boat that?
We currently lack the capacity in house to do that ourselves, so. My assumption on that and Christine, feel free to jump in, is that we would fire hire a third party contractors to do that something for that and. Unfortunately, we're not getting to the staffing discussion today, but but that's one I'm looking forward to because. I think we could stand to have a few more hands on deck at our Water Resources Center.
Great, and then my other question around S twenty one, the asset management schedule. Similar vein, was that intended that fifty thousand dollars to be a contracted duration? And something to think about or put a pin in for later when we talk about the staffing, is it better maybe if we? Share the cost of the asset management coordinator between general government and the WRC?
Um, so the asset management line item, you seen that budget is for to bring a consultant onboard to help us prepare this. From experience, previously, I was at Vernon. The asset management plan was completed for that wastewater reclamation center and the two things in common that. Seashell has with Vernon is that they both produce for clean water. Now, in Vernon's case, they use it to water their golf courses, which is something I would love to entertain in Seashell, but. The cost of the asset management plan there was a hundred thousand dollars, but that's a much larger plant servicing forty four thousand people. And I think there's more if you include the outlying areas, so I would say fifty thousand should be sufficient, given the size of the plant to be able to. Complete an asset management plan with a consultant helping us to do that, but it's very, it's it's specialized work that requires. It's more efficiently done by consultants who have dealt with many different water reclamation centers across the province.
Okay, so I'm just going to jump in. So at risk of beating a beating a dead horse, of course, I agree with all of you about the comments about these items being operational. However, I do want to comment that we have seen some of these before. So I think when we move forward and we have our sewer day, sewer budget day. Looking at which of these would be increases and which of these are continuing on from previous years. Or do we have some kind of existing upper maintenance budget already? That we may need to add on to or. I I just want to see a better breakdown of what is continuing from last year and what is new, because not all of these are new.
Which one do you not think is new? These are all new to this year's budget and although one was asked for last year, it was not given. And so that's come back as an item. But as far as I know, these are all new and need to be added and incremental to the budget we have.
Okay, um, just off the top of my head, which I don't have last year's budget in front of me.
No.
I'm just looking at the odor control system, the UV bulb replacement, the carbon for odor control.
Yeah. Was there last year, but we didn't get approval to put money into the reserve. And I think the same with the other one.
Yeah, so but also looking at what did we approve for multi years kind of last year? I I just want to.
I can do reconciliation for us, yes.
Yeah, we kind of have like an incomplete picture here. Because we have some stuff that are multi year projects that we're starting to get towards because like Director Dylan said. Once we get to know, we get to know these yearly costs, so I think we had a couple of those from last year. So either we go in detail or we don't, but right now we're kind of doing both, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, maybe I'll jump in again just to move things along for the sake of time, because we still have another section to get through and we still have an in camera meeting after this, folks. The idea here really is this is a for information session, this was not the start of the debating the line by line, so I think we've collected some. Good comments here and can provide some good background material to get ready for the the separate day on wastewater. Moving forward. Yep.
I just wanted to chime in with the same vein as the previous item discussion. S thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. I'm happy to see move on and incorporate, I don't need to see them again. As far as I'm concerned, their their life, safety, work safe and. Critical asset management issues, so I don't think we need, I don't need to see them again.
Okay, great.
A second.
Okay, so Dave, do you want to move into the community associations quickly and this will be a for information as well on the. On the community association. Asks.
Okay, so starting on page ninety five. There's a summary report just explaining, we sat down with the community associations. We hadn't heard from one of them, they responded today and so. I will put the this back onto another agenda incorporating their the comments that we received today. There is no one, there's no, once again, no intent to. Make motions on this, but this is items that each group came forward with that they would like to see. Embraced by council, you know, if not this year down the road or. If we see one or two that make some sense here or a few that make sense that we bring them through, continue bringing them through the budget process. Those ones are the ones we would price out, the ones that made sense to to bring forward. But starting on page ninety seven. Is the detail from the reports when we sat down with the groups, we asked them for their top four or five items that they would like. Us to bring through to council and. And so that's what is included in the, I'll call these are like the minutes that we held from those meetings.
Yes, Mayor Seegers.
Davis Bay number one, four and five. I mean, I one, one and four, I think tie into the safety report that the province just did. On highway number one oh one, so I think it's just, it's a conversation. Uh, so I think it's just, it's a conversation to have with them to see when they're looking at moving that forward. Cause that was on their list a few years ago and then they cut the funding. So those two, I think is it's follow-up with them, see where it is on their list and, and what we could do there. Number five, couple of wooden safety ladders on the wooden pilings to give swimmers options to get out of the water. That should be minimal cost and should be something fairly easy to do.
I seem to recall with the conversation around the swim float, uh, item number two has been ongoing uh, due to the cost of it, if I remember correctly, we did talk about it last year, didn't we?
Yes. Yes, uh, Counselor Scott.
And I was just curious, like, some of the pictures that they've got on, uh, uh, there that's showing some of the ladders where they're talking about wooden ladders. A lot of those pilings actually really aren't safe to, to stand on there. They're all rotted out. I, I wouldn't be for putting a, a wooden ladder on any of those pilings outside of what's attached to the wharf physically. I think eventually we're going to be tasked to go down and cut out those pilings at, at the water level and get them out of the way before somebody hurts themselves. If, uh, if the pilings collapse under the weight of the kids climbing all over them.
Oh, pilings that are like the, the wharf itself is rebuilt, like the, the end part. Could we put some on there?
Well, you still have to have access to get up to the railings and stuff. So I'm not sure where they're talking about. When I look at the pictures that they've provided, they're, they're actually on all the old rotted pilings, so. Not, not sure what they're getting at.
I think we could still look at that one, see if it's possible or not. I don't know what the rest of council says.
Sounds good to me. I'll second it.
Yeah, staff can investigate that easily enough. That's not an issue. Check to see if we can do something.
Okay. Any further comments or?
I guess I will ask about East Porpoise Bay. The next page, looking at item B, the, the radar speed signs. Uh, I don't know where the twenty-five thousand dollar number came from. Um, I'd be, be curious to know. Uh, if that was the idea, looking at perhaps a portable trailer unit that we could move around and use in different places around the municipality. But, um, certainly before this meeting, I was looking around and global industrial and, and places like that and there, they can be had for a lot less than that. So I'd be interested in seeing numbers back for those.
Yeah, I think those very much depend on what type you're going for. If you're going for the little teeny weeny ones that, um, you know, we have a couple of volunteers manning just as a you know, to an awareness moment, it's different from some of the other ones. Well, we can look at the different options for you.
Ones where we have volunteers manning them, they actually exist on the Sunshine Coast and are available for communities to use. And I think they've actually reached out to that group to do that. I think they're looking for something that we can have on, you know, for our staff.
Yeah, I think the permanently installed ones run you about twenty-five. Okay. So I think that's where that number comes from.
Put your two cents in.
Just on, uh, number D, I don't recall the, uh, thermoplastic speed indicators last year. Um, again, it was a year ago, maybe I forgot about it, but I think that's probably the most appropriate solution. Just a big old fifty on the road. Uh, I, I think that's what that road really means.
I notice they've done that in Tawannick now.
Yeah, I think we need to have a bit of a discussion about that. Uh, putting giant decals on the road all over the place, um, is not always a good idea either. It has its own safety implications, uh, when people start getting distracted with, uh, you know, twenty signs in a, in a hundred-foot area and then stuff all over the road and everything else. Um, so, so I think the safety guys can give you some more information on that.
Yeah, I mean, from a engineering standpoint, uh, I, I would say that anything we do has to be in line with the Transportation Association of Canada guidelines. And, um, some of those, uh, thermoplastic markings on road surfaces could actually be non-conforming in terms of the tax standards. Um, and also with the radar speed signs, um, I know they're a popular item because everybody sees them. And, uh, and they think they're great initially, but the research has been done, uh, at the Transportation Association of Canada that eventually people will start to ignore them that when they are accustomed to their presence there, they, they start to lose the effect, um, after some time. So that's definitely something that we'd look at. Um, and then there's also the solar ones versus the hardwired ones. And I think the twenty-five thousand dollars is probably based on the hardwired ones. And, uh, we could perhaps look at a solar option there to, um, reduce the cost. But, uh, I, uh, I like the idea of, um, if there's mobile ones. Um, and those actually have, um, data loggers in them that will capture the speed. So you'll know what percentage of motors, like what speed they're doing. And, um, I guarantee you, cause I've done this, uh, you know, before I came to District C Shelter, I was in a highway agency. Is that when we deployed those, we saw that initially for the first two weeks, people were slowing down. There was a marked decrease in speed. And then as time went on, effectiveness of those devices decreased, so.
So that would point to potentially having them portable. So they could move around to various areas. Once they're no longer effective in one area, move them somewhere else. We have others, other places they could go.
Or, or, or the other thing that is done is it's, um, during key times of the year. So when kids are going back to school, uh, you'll see those mobile, um, speed indicators deployed. Cause obviously they want people to readjust their driving because kids are back in school. And, uh, so that might be something, or during tourist season, when you have a lot of, uh, drivers from the lower mainland coming to this area who are, uh, used to driving at higher speeds and, uh, unaccustomed to, uh, what we expected in Seashell. So that would also be a good time of the year to maybe strategically deploy them. And then they also double up to be a variable message board signs that can be used on, uh, construction projects, or if you want to advertise community events, you can use them for that purpose as well.
I just about bought one last week to donate to my community association, so I'll keep an eye out for them.
Okay. Any further comments on any of these or?
The SDBA, um, number two. Uh, I believe we just had an update in our Q three that that's, is that not exactly what was being done out there right now? Uh, and then curious about what question, uh, what item four actually is?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the, uh, what those concrete extensions would be.
We'll have more.
Well, pretty complete in my mind, but, uh, it was at around, uh, those wells, uh, where they had the grading, maybe? A couple of spots on Calvary that have grades? Maybe something like that. I, I have some odd recollection. We'll, we'll. Look into that and get you more information.
Yes, exactly.
Refining signage is something that came forward as part of that grant. Right? And the washroom as well.
Yes.
Wharf Avenue project, I don't think the design is complete for that yet, is it? I think we're at seventy-five percent or something. So there is, that is something that could be, uh, looked at and incorporated into the design. I think the concern is we, we don't want to have it be difficult for maintenance for our staff. But we do want to have some trees and greenery or whatever there.
I think the, uh, like, as, uh, as you mentioned, your worship, the, um, the design is a seventy-five percent, there's still some tweaking of the design. Uh, the intent is to have as low maintenance landscaping as possible. I ju, I think Jamie's left the meeting now, but, um, based on the description he gives me of the type of work he does, um, I don't, I don't think we want to add more, um, landscaping for him to have to maintain. And, uh, uh, these things are always well-intentioned, but, um, uh, people don't often think of, uh, the amount of maintenance that goes into those types of landscaping features.
Seeing nobody else putting their hands up, I guess I'll ask another one. Uh, looking at the Shora on the next page, uh, number five, uh, talks about, um, the stairs down to the beach or, yeah, being in poor shape, rotting. And I guess this comes back to the asset management planning. But, uh, do we have any sort of a schedule on where, uh, when or how often um, our park staff might rebuild beach accesses? Do we try and accomplish one a year or one every two years, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you what the schedule is offhand, but it is a very low number, um, and we have an awful lot of them. Um, that's certainly the way Perry was doing it. I don't think Jamie's got a, a new approach to it. I know he already went down and looked at that particular example that was talked about here with the, with the rotting into it. Do you want to comment on that at all, Jamie?
Um, yeah, so we've got fifty of them. Sorry, my audio is kind of hard to hear at this moment. Um, but, um, yeah, with, uh, with fifty beach accesses, it's, um, it's quite something to try and keep up, uh, the rebuilding process. So, uh, there's, there's a couple that are, you know, standing out in my mind right now that are in definite need of some rebuilding. So that one was actually identified through our, um, inspections earlier in the fall. And Shora is on the list for repair, but there's, there's other ones too, um, Lawson needs some work. And, um, I think even cardiac, or sorry, it's not called cardiac, it's called, uh, oh, I'm using my old terminology, uh, Annex. So out at Annex Road, that's another one that's kind of one of the old school ones that's, uh, in need of some repairs. So, uh, I think once we've got a handle on our asset management, as Kern kind of likes to keep talking about, we'll have a better idea how many of these we can actually do in a year and how many years it'll take to get around the whole list of them. Um, but some of them are, are not that bad. Some of them are just kind of, you know, goat trails and whatnot. Uh, but some of them are quite, um, substantial, you know, stairways and decks and things like that, that, that do have a lifespan and that's something we've got to keep in mind as we build anything further, so.
I'll point to number three on this. I think that's in our, our work plan. Should be starting with our.
Organics is starting.
I know. Well, we're greenway, greenways too, is it not? We're doing greenways too.
Yeah, that's for residential, but not commercial. Yeah.
Regional district is not doing green waste. Regional district is only doing food waste. I think our program's going to have green waste as well, so we can say that one's going to be done.
What's, I guess, what's the possibility of turning some of these, uh, some of these, um, stairways down to the beach, either to a neighborhood association or, uh, like a Tillicum Bay Community Association? You, you get fifty of these things, you know, stairways down to the beaches, these things could, I mean, they could, they're just a consistent, um, drain on manpower. You know, maintaining them and, you know, you've got to keep them safe. So you've got to go out and brush them off and clean them off and make sure the access and cut the brush back and it's, uh, it, I just see it becoming a major, I mean, it is becoming a major, uh, problem, uh, concern, I guess.
So I don't mind jumping in just with the, the regular maintenance stuff. Uh, the staff are able to get around four times a year to these. It's just really when we run into replacement situations that, um, it's kind of taxing. But for the most part, we're able to get around them all and, um, you know, blow them off and keep the vegetation back. At this point, we're not in trouble. It's really when we come time to replace some of these, these bigger ones, like you've mentioned Tillicum Tom, that's, uh, our, sorry, counselor Lamb, that's, that's a, um, that's a big one and that would have a, uh, extensive cost to, to replace that one. But the maintenance side of things is not so bad.
Yeah. Sorry, it's, uh, it's pretty amazing what Jamie's able to do, given, uh, there's fifty-four beach accesses in, in a community this size. Um, uh, my experience with having community associations do some of these maintenance functions is, um, it, it seems like a good idea on the surface, but, um, it's some, we need some, a certain level of consistency. They are ultimately district assets and, and property. And so, um, with us doing it, there's more consistency to the actual maintenance of those. Some, you know, sometimes community associations, they'll, they'll do great for the first one or two years and then things, uh, might fall off and disrepair and, um, you know, um, there's a, there's an injury liability there, especially with stairs, um, that we want to be able to inspect those and, uh, maintain those properly. Uh, because, uh, the liabilities that are involved with, um, people using those facilities. So, um, you know, I, I, I would say that, uh, based on Jamie's description, he seems to be on top of it. Uh, and given fifty-four, that's, uh, that's an amazing accomplishment. Um, but I think, uh, I'm, I'm pretty confident that Jamie can handle it. And if it gets out of hand, then, um, you know, we'll, we'll look at more resources for it, but, uh, I wouldn't want to go to the community.
Yeah. Okay. Just one of the things that I see is, is so we've got all these beach accesses and we're trying to give access to the people in the community for these things and how much are they being used? And how much do they cost? But what, what's happening with, with the parks crew is now we're going to be adding trail avenue to it. We're going to have, uh, we're going to add Wharf Avenue to it. We're going, you know, the, the, uh, Water Resource Center needs a major amount of work. So we're looking at adding, you know, if you added two more employees to do this, where, where does it stop? I mean, we can, you know, I, I would, I'm, I would say, let's have a look at this and let's decommission these things if, if they were going to, if, if, if it's going to be a, a too big a problem. Anyway, just my ramblings, I guess, anyway. But, uh, so how are we doing here? We just spoke, uh, everybody pretty happy with where we're going?
Matt had his hand up.
Okay, now, go ahead.
Just quickly on the beach accesses, um, I think it's a good opportunity for community, community-based fundraising to pay for the capital costs rather than the maintenance costs. Um, particularly, uh, this, uh, beach access to the heritage. That's one that we could maybe get the community to step up. It's incredibly narrow right now as well. So maybe this community wants to see a wider one where you can actually pass people without stepping on each other. And I think in terms of Counselor Lamb's comment, uh, we constantly find that trails are a number one asset when we talk to citizens. Um, people like to see the trails that connect our communities. So I, I think it would be a shame to close down this type of stuff.
Counselor Todd, go ahead.
I just wanted to chime in, uh, I agree, you know, in the grand scheme of things, trails are fairly cheap. At least from a maintenance perspective, it's not like trying to operating a pool or an ice rink or, you know, gymnasium facilities, things like that. So, um, yeah, they got to be rebuilt every so often. And yeah, Jamie's guys have to go out there four, four or five times a year to brush them and blow them and I, but I think it's, uh, they're well worth it. And I noticed, you know, both the Tillicum Bay and the Tawannick Community Associations are, are also looking at beach accesses, uh, in here and, um, other pathways. I'm, I'm happy to move on to the Tillicum Bay one if anybody else doesn't have anything on the last one there.
I do, but first of all, I'd say, I know Jamie's group does an amazing job. And again, it's a service level conversation, right? So what are the assets we have? What kind of service? What kind of service level are we looking to maintain there? And do we have the right staffing to do that? If not, then we either have to increase staffing or cut back on the assets that we have to maintain. That's the conversation we have to look at. So more asset management work. Number six on here, a sign, they want a sign. Can we give them a sign?
That's on Shora's list, right?
Yeah, it's on Shora's list, yeah. Page one oh two. They want a sign.
I honestly don't think it's going to change anything. I need twenty cars a day on the weekend around my cul-de-sac.
We can investigate it though for you. See if it fits.
Okay.
Tillicum Bay.
Tillicum Bay, Alton.
Number one. I pulled up that particular piece of property that was mentioned and it doesn't seem to go where they would like a trail to go. So I'm just wondering if there's a little more information on that.
I'd be happy to share my screen, just walk through the map real briefly if that would be helpful to council. Okay, so the property in question belonging to Mr. Purton, as referenced in the letter, is this one here? As long as you see how it narrows down to the end. And then the district owns this particular property, lot E, right here. So the premise would be perhaps to come in along the skinny part, walk along the property. We get to the district-owned property, which would then take people from Naylor to Tillicum without having to go on the Seashell and Light Road. And so we are overdue to attend to site visit. Jamie and I would go out on site, meet with Mr. Purton and other folks in the neighborhood, examine the feasibility, come to a rough estimate of cost and so forth and report back if council be interested.
I'd be interested in learning more about this possibility. You know, if we can keep people off of Seashell and Light Road, that improves pedestrian access. It improves neighborhood connectivity, but I don't know how the rest of council feels about it.
Bike access?
Yeah, that's incredibly high value. It's connecting Tillicum Bay Road to the beach essentially. At the marina there.
Asset management. Staff workload. Thought you could investigate.
Then on number four, shoulder widening. I know we also received an email from somebody in Sandy Hook about shoulder widening, at least in the Hidden Grove area. I'm just wondering if there's other, other active transportation grants we might be able to chase down for, for some of these opportunities to do shoulder widening. Yeah, I know that Modi's working on it on the highways as they have surplus budget and the electoral areas at the SCRD are looking at spending gas tax funding on some of that stuff. If they can get the legalities figured out, but.
I think this is a bigger question. First of all, there's not, not a lot of room in some of the places up there to do that. And was it two years ago when we did the piece, one of the pieces on Seashell and Light Road? We were going to do a fairly big piece and when we dug it up, we ended up having to make it a lot smaller because it was a paved logging road and we found tree stumps and all that kind of stuff. So love to do this, and I think there's a bigger conversation to have around how and when and being strategic around getting it done. But it is something that we need to look at putting a plan in place for. So rather than actually doing this, I would say we need to potentially look at maybe some money to do a plan for the area to, to see how we target getting some of this moving forward so that we're ready for when those grants and things come forward, we're ready to move some of the projects. Anything else on Tillicum Bay? What about Tawannick?
I'm afraid to mention anything about beach accesses. You know, looking at this on topography, it, it looks like it should be an easy thing. It looks like there shouldn't be more than, you know, no stairs on it. But I don't know if staff have looked at this in the past at any point. If they have any insider knowledge, you know, it is about six hundred and fifty meters worth of pathway that would have to be brushed and cleared and gravelled plus signage. But I don't know if we've got any sort of background knowledge on this area.
Sorry, I didn't get a, a map view of this proposed beach access whereabouts. Is this Counselor Todd?
This one's just on the Tawannick side of the Great Creek Bridge, next to the old Log Sort property. There's a very skinny road allowance in there, or not a road allowance, but a right of way that we've got. But it's supposed to be six hundred and fifty meters long.
No, I'm not familiar with this location, but maybe Director Allen and I can take a look at that spot too while we're out that way.
Yeah, I don't know the possibility, but I think that could be a really neat project for the community to undertake and just keep hands off for the district. To start bushwhacking and start roughing in a trail, doesn't need to be anything fancy. And then maybe we can look at upgrading it a few years down the road.
We just need to make sure it stays on our property.
So Jamie and Andrew will look at that when they go out there too. Anything further on any of these? Counselor Lamb, over to you. We're done.
Okay. So, yeah, that pretty well winds up the meetings for today. Do we have any, anybody in the gallery with questions?
Can we do a motion to adjourn?
Oh, let's do a motion to adjourn then. Okay, all in favor, you bet. We're all good.